Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Monday, November the 9th at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held via data transmission. So it's virtual meeting to be enjoyed by all. The Planning Board meeting, 7 o'clock item is the minutes of the last meeting. And if I could get a motion to accept or if there are any changes that need to be made to the minutes, please let me know. Mr. Sheehan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And can I get a second?
I got it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or opposed to the animus? Roll call. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Sheehan?
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw, Patchy, excuse me?
Aye.
Mr. Patchakowski?
Aye.
And the chairman is aye. So minutes are accepted as filed. Okay, next item on the agenda. 7:05. Patrick, can you put that back up, please? The agenda.
Okay.
Public hearing. Article for the 11, 12, 20 Fall Special Town Meeting. Zoning Bylaw. Amendment to Section 3.1.5. Table of Use Regulations. Table G. Wholesale Business and Storage. 3A. Open Lot Storage of Motor Vehicles. Okay? Paul, the understanding on this is we're going to discuss it here, but it is not going to be addressed at town meeting, this fall town meeting? Am I correct?
Yes. As we understand it, the likelihood of any of the zoning articles moving forward on Thursday is slim. What the selectmen and the finance committee manager decided they would like to do is to open the town meeting on Thursday evening and take care of three budget-related articles that are necessary for the town to continue operations. And then dissolve that in the hearing or continue the town meeting until a date in January or February. So that's, we'll be talking about this in a little more detail later on in the agenda. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can provide a background on this proposed zoning by law amendment.
Thank you.
We had a draft zoning by law amendment that our consultant Ted Brovitz wrote to create a new section of the zoning by law, Section 7.8, that would address open lot storage of vehicles. After some discussion and questions that were raised about that article, it was decided to handle this, take a different approach and to not go with a new section of the by law to regulate this, but to use some of the zoning that's within the proposed Boston Providence Highway to address open lot storage. So the reason why we're having a hearing tonight, not with, you know, later than the other zoning amendments that we handled last month, is because the public hearing notice that was drafted was drafted for that different by law amendment to create that section of the by law. We realized that that hearing notice really technically legally didn't cover the same area as what's being proposed in this by law amendment. And so we had to re-advertise the hearing. And that's why we're holding the hearing now, this late coast to town meeting. This by law amendment proposes to amend Section 3.1.5, the Table of Use Regulations. It will create a new subcategory in Section G, Wholesale Business and Storage. The new subcategory will be Section 3A, Open Lot Storage Motor Vehicles. This by law amendment proposes to prohibit the use in all zoning districts except for the proposed new Boston Providence Highway District. Open Lot Storage Facilities are located on properties separate from the auto dealers. There are currently 10 approved open lot storage vehicle lots in town that are storing over 3,000 cars covering approximately 50 acres of land. These auxiliary storage facilities include 10 separate auto dealers in Norwood. And the size of the storage facilities range from 300 to 700 cars. Open Lot Vehicle Storage Facilities have been identified as a type of activity that doesn't create much tax revenue for the town and doesn't really create many new jobs. It consumes a lot of land and that land area has to be cleared and in some cases paved, which can generate some additional environmental benefits from such extensive parking areas. The only zoning district that open lot storage is currently allowed in is the manufacturing district. And this by law amendment will eliminate that, so it won't be allowed in the manufacturing district, but just in the Boston Providence Highway District, close to where the auto dealers are. There are caveats or requirements as to where they could locate within that district. And the by law has provisions that would require it to be set back from the road so that we wouldn't see an open lot storage lot right from Route 1 itself. They need to be kind of tucked back behind some other buildings. There are also setback requirements for storage lots and in particular for parking garages, if that's part of a storage facility. Parking garages do require a special permit that would need to be issued by the Planning Board. By locating these closer to Route 1, it'll keep the large trailers that move these vehicles, the car carriers, keep them into that area of Route 1. We won't see them traveling around town. They won't be running into problems trying to go around the railroad bridges that are too low to accommodate them. This will hopefully allow for the remaining land in the manufacturing district to be used for uses that can generate more tax revenue and create more jobs, which are two of the goals that we have. The existing storage lots will be protected by the current zoning, so they would in effect be grandfathered. In addition to those lots that I mentioned a few minutes ago of what's there already, we currently have two applications pending with the zoning board appeals. There's a 94 car lot proposed on Route 1 and on Everett Street, where we discussed adding a property into the Boston Providence Highway District a few weeks ago. The owner of that open lot storage facility that has a permit for 200 vehicles is, has submitted an application to the zoning board to expand that to 600 cars to be stored there. There's a good chance that this project would trigger a planning board major project special permit. But under today's zoning, they've applied to the zoning board. And we've been in touch with the applicant's attorney to let him know that because of the way the state law works, all of our zoning amendments are gonna, are gonna kind of cause some limbo for some applications that are pending now in front of the town boards. The way the state law works is if somebody does not have a building permit or a special permit in hand on the day that a legal ad appears in the newspaper, so the first legal ad for a zoning amendment, then they could be subject to needing to comply with that amendment if it's eventually approved at by town meeting and by the Attorney General. So the continued delay in getting our zoning amendments in front of voters at town meeting will have kind of a limbo effect on some permit applications that are currently in the permitting pipeline or may be applied for in the near future. So this kind of adds some, it complicates things for a few people, but we'll work through it. I would be glad to answer any questions that anybody has about the proposed zoning by law amendment.
Are there any questions from members of the board? Well, this is a public hearing and I have nothing, no questions for the board members? Is anybody from the public that's, oh, excuse me, Mr. Bamber?
I believe Ernie had his hand up, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Patchakowski?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Paul, where we've put Vanderbilt into the mix now as part of the district, this will open up Vanderbilt for open lot storage as a right unless it triggers a special permit?
Yes, it will. And we've received a special permit application last week for David Spiegel's lot on Carnegie Row to have the board issue a special permit. And I think they're hoping without any restrictions on the duration of that permit. So, you know, we had that moratorium, it timed out in July, and now we're seeing some more applications that have come in. And this will add to the open lot storage inventory in the town.
So just to follow up on that. So in the past, we've always issued a permit for open lot storage, usually with a two-year renewables every two years that come back before the board to get an extension. Where is yes now in the Table of Use? It would be in perpetuity, perpetuity or it's there, they don't have to come back for, once they get it, they don't have to come back every two years?
That's correct. And actually, the only special permit that had that condition was the Carnegie Row lot. The other special permits that the planning board has issued did not have any requirement that they return to the board or that the permits would time out. The attorneys representing those applicants wanted to make sure that they had the right to continue to use the property for that use. So only one had that condition and we probably won't be doing something like that again, given what the zoning will allow for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ernie. So to that point, Paul, that lot on Vanderbilt, that we've been continuing is temporary storage, temporary storage. He's now going to get that as a matter of right. Do we want to do that with all the open land lots that are down in that area?
So I think because of the size of the lot would trigger a major project special permit, which is what triggered it originally. So for smaller lots with fewer than 100 vehicles, the zoning board has been the special permit granting authority. But our major project special permit section of the zoning by law for big projects with over 100 parking spaces, it triggers a planning board special permit. So that property would still trigger it and they will go through the process. But now the right is, you know, is being steered into that area for that kind of use.
Thank you. Because it'll also allow them, if they purchase of contiguous properties, they would, they would get that benefit as well, correct?
Yes. And, you know, it, I'm glad we're having this conversation because I want to make sure the board goes into this with their eyes open. If the board doesn't want to see this kind of use continue into the future, you can, you can ask to have this by law amendment changed and the use could be completely prohibited from the whole town. But this was meant as kind of a compromise to try to work with and accommodate the dealers. Ernie?
Just to follow up with the chairman's comments, Paul. Would it, and I'm just thinking out loud here, would it hurt us to, instead of you putting in yes, to put in PB? And everyone, and instead of making it a by right, having it come before the board? I mean, I hate to say, you know, I don't want to say notice one guy and yes to another, but if something looks, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, would it be, instead of giving it as a by right in that zone to, I mean, would we be hurting ourselves or if we put it by all open lot storage, have to come before a board?
So this is not a use that's allowed by right. Pat's brought the article up on the screen.
Let me enlarge it so I can, maybe I'm, I could be.
Yeah, there is a PB right there, Ernie, for planning board special permit.
All right, I'm sorry. I was looking at wholesale showroom was a yes. I'm sorry. Okay. So any, so I apologize. Anyone coming for open lot storage will have to come before us?
If it's got 100 cars or more, no, yes, you're right. Any open lot storage would, under this by law, need to come before the planning board, regardless of size.
Okay, I apologize. I was, didn't enlarge and I thought the yes was for open lot storage. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sheehan, did you have a question, sir?
No, I was just gonna point that out also, that it was a PB and not a yes.
Okay. Because the reason why I brought it up is because we've been really concerned about that area. And we're looking to develop that, especially going further back towards the signal towers there in the back and develop those sites that I don't want them, in my opinion, to be all dotted with open lot parking, storage. So it's, it's taken away from the, if you look at GZA, he did a very nice job doing that building over, fastened it up, doing the parking. He came and met with us. He did the lighting to be complimenting it. And then you throw a chain link fence up with cars in it. What does it make his place look like? And, you know, we gave him the additional two years of this last time around that's running out now. And he has no intention of building a building there that he's come in and said that he wanted. And he's paying zero, not zero, but he's paying cheap taxes because there's not a building on this, on the lot. And that's not what we, we're not, there's no equity there for the town of Norwood. Okay?
This by law amendment would allow that to continue and would allow others. And as I said, up on Everett Street, the lot that was added into the district a few weeks ago, that's now got a special permit application for a total of 600 vehicles. That's on top of the 3,000 and the other 94 that came in a few weeks ago to the board appeals. So this, there apparently is still a demand and we don't know when that demand will be no longer needed. But the Boston Providence Highway District with those areas like Vanderbilt and Everett Street that were bailed out beyond the corridor will allow this use. And so it's important that the board, you know, go into this with your eyes open and what you want to do with this particular use, given the extent of development over the last five years of this particular use.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions from members of the board? Good evening, Mr. Hajar. Can we get your comment, David?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you having this discussion once again. I am very concerned about Vanderbilt and that you folks spent a lot of time discussing how you wanted that particular area divided between where potential housing may go and at the same time trying to allow for additional commercial development. And I am concerned, as I think Ernie said, that we're really going to allow in this entire Vanderbilt area a bunch of, or potentially a bunch of car storage sites in an area that you're trying to build up as a small community with people being able to walk around and enjoy the surroundings, not if it's going to be all chain link fences and in, you know, with open storage for automobiles. I don't think that was the intent though, when we say, what do we want Noah to look like in 10 years? This is a primaria that we thought would be good to generate some housing with some mixed use. But at least in my mind, my intention of mixed use wasn't to include a bunch of potential open lot storage of vehicles in that very same area.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering if it's, you know, I hate to penalize the car dealers because they are, you know, a major part of Route 1. But I mean, geez, I agree with Selectman Hajar and with you, Mr. Chairman, and others on the board. I mean, we really don't want, I mean, let's look at the Route 1 corridor. So if we stay on the Route 1 corridor for open lot storage, where is there space? I mean, where is there any really space to put cars? Vanderbilt has got open lots, big open lots. You know, maybe where the old iron horse was, you could sneak some cars, you know, back there. That's a pretty good sized lot, but other than that, there really isn't. So where are they gonna look? They're gonna look to buy property or rent space or rent lease parking lots down on Vanderbilt. And, you know, you know, maybe that's not the, you know, the right place. Maybe that's, maybe we, maybe we allow it. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. Maybe we make it as a, maybe enough's enough and we shut the faucet off right now. Just throwing it out for discussion, you know, is it something that we want to consider?
Ernie, to your, to your point of the iron horse, goodbye there lately, he's got signs up there for site development, okay? As opposed to storage?
Yeah.
He's looking to build on that.
I hope so. But I mean, that, but it's a big lot. And it's that in Vanderbilt is the only real areas left of open, of big lots. So maybe we should faucet off. I don't know.
Should we pull this, pull the plug on this for now and rethink this whole Vanderbilt Route 1 lot storage approach?
Something to think about. I'd like to hear the other members of the board, their opinion.
Mr. Bamber?
I could, I could see these lots growing and taking over huge areas. I could just see that happening pretty easily. Doesn't cost a lot to build them. They love having inventory. There seems to be a demand. We've given it forever and ever. Like Ernie said, maybe, you know, maybe enough's enough. I mean, they're, it's kind of take, take, take and I don't know.
And once it's granted as a, as a matter of right, there's nothing we can do going forward?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I've also heard from some in the town, just safety concerns. I'm no expert, but some of the things brought up were gas traps and the distance between cars and fire risks and those sorts of things. So maybe there's some more considerations that may need to be taken. Of course, I'm sure that the right analysis has been done by the appropriate departments, but I just communicating what I've heard from, from, from people out there.
Thank you. And that's, and that's real, you know? It's a major consideration is the safety. Mr. Bamber?
So what exactly would our options be leaving this meeting? I don't know if Paul?
So if the board decides to table this and not go through with this article, then the use would continue to be allowed in the manufacturing zone. And I would need to go, let me take a look at this, hold on. So it may still be allowed in the Boston Province Highway Zone. I need to go back and look at that zoning to see if it would affect that. Pat, do you have anything on that?
Well, just to kind of get back to the obvious, which is the town meeting is on Thursday. I mean, we all think there's, you know, a high, a likely chance that we're probably going to continuing the special town meetings, including the zoning articles. Does, do we just kind of use that in the back, in the background as opportunity to rethink this? Obviously, we're having a public hearing today, but do we maybe look into having a public hearing now in January, December, depending on when the next date is determined for, for the special town meeting?
So if we need to continue to talk about this, then, you know, we do have time, as Pat's pointed out. The simple solution, if the board, if the majority of the board thinks that we have enough open lot storage facilities in town already, then alls we do is we change this article to remove the PB special permit requirement in the Boston Province Highway and change that to an N and the Table of Use would read that the use is not allowed in all zoning districts, just the way we did for asphalt plants. So that would be a simple change and I think we have time to maneuver that. If town meeting takes place in January, February, we would, we'd be able to hopefully work with the selectmen and do something to change the article based on the outcome of this public hearing.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, going back to what I, the question I asked earlier, but I couldn't hear you the answer. The timing where the warrant is already, I mean, the special, do we have time with, you know, they're gonna open town meeting and then they're gonna do a continuance? Does that freeze everything or do we, do we legitimately have, you know, let's assume that, that the specials aren't gonna happen to January. Do we legitimately have time after town meeting has been continued to discuss this and vote on it? I guess that's my question. Where's the shut off?
We're in a, in new territory. We've never dealt with a situation like this where the town is talking about opening a special town meeting, hearing, acting on three articles and then, and then the problem is what the next step is, whether town meeting is dissolved and the selectmen have to call a new town meeting or whether the town meeting is continued to a date certain. We don't know how that's gonna go. But if we have a zoning amendment and we're having the public hearing and the planning board decides they want to change that zoning amendment, I'd like to think that we'd be able to work with the selectmen, the manager and town council on a way to do that without completely walking away from this at this time.
Well, we could always do a amendment, we could always do, at, on the floor of town meeting, we could always make a change to the amendment, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, I mean.
Yep. We could do that, which is probably the simplest thing to do. But if we wanted to be, you know, overly cautious or, you know, we could schedule another public hearing before town meeting that says that we just want to prohibit the whole use. And that way, we're completely open and transparent about what we're trying to do. But either way, Ernie, you know, acting on it at town meeting by prohibiting the use is certainly something that we can do and that would be the final action to put, put an end to these additional storage facilities.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I would, I would say on this particular article, on this particular article, I'm not ready to go 100%, you know, for or against on this. I'd like to think about it and, and so I, I mean, my recommendation would be to continue this, continue the public hearing. You know, I think we should vote on it as a board prior to town meeting if we can. You know, the special, but I'm not 100% sure tonight I want to pull the plug on open lot storage, but I would like to consider it and, and take a little, think about the consequences, the pros and cons of it.
Yep. And what about if we continue with tonight and then Thursday night comes for the 12th and they're gonna say that we've still continued it? That it gives them an even easier way to push it off to January. Okay, as it, as they're moving other articles, Ernie, you know? I have no problem with that. Anybody else have a problem with that? Can I get a motion that, Paul, do we want to do a motion to?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Hajar has his hand up.
Oh, okay, he's not on my fan. Mr. Hajar, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's okay, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify some, Ernie, the town meeting will be dissolved after Thursday. The intent and the only intent is to get through the required financial articles so that the tax rate can be set and bills can be sent out on time for the end of the year is is required. It is not the intent to continue town meeting, it's to dissolve it. And the selectmen will have to call a brand new one sometime in either January or early February. So it's, it's not going to be continued, whatever, it's going to be dissolved.
Thank you. So we do have time, Mr. Chairman, then, then we can continue this and and have a little more discussion on it. We can get the pros and cons of of which way might be the best way to go. That works, that that works out perfect.
Anybody have an objection to that?
Nope.
And I'll make the, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue this public hearing until Patrick, once she has settled our next.
Do you want to have it be our next planning meeting or do you want a time later in December?
Whenever we can just gather some information on, on, you know, looking at the bylaw again. And if there's any few guys, Paul, you and Pat can and other board members, we can look at the pros of doing it, the cons of doing it, what are the consequences? You know, things like that, just so we have a real educated, we can make a real educated decision.
Assessment.
I was going to throw out two dates in December. I think this is a discussion item later. Our December 7th and December 21st. So I don't know if you have a preference.
I, I probably the 21st, I don't know.
21st sounds good to me. Mr. Bamber.
Uh, that's good. Yeah, I can get my secret Santa list all figured out by then.
Mr. Hatchey.
I I'm okay with it.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes, me too.
Yeah, continue to the 21st.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Mr. Petrykowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Aye.
And the chairman is aye, 5-0 on the vote. Thank you. Next item. On your, on the agenda, I don't have that right here in front of me, Patrick.
Actually, next agenda item is to talk about what we were just talking about, the, the town meeting scheduled for Thursday. And I think we've covered most of that and and I'm glad that Selectman Hajar was available to to inform us about how that was going to work. We've been getting ready for town meeting, in some cases, working on some of these articles for a couple of years. And so it's hard to kind of let let my foot off the gas when we're, when we're almost at the finish line. But I understand what's going on and and the situation with the pandemic, and I agree with the game plan that that the selectmen have come up with. And so we will continue to kind of polish up these articles and and the presentations in hopes that we'll be able to go forward in January, February and get final approval for some of these zoning amendments. So that's, you know, the plan is for town meeting to, to take place in person, the high school gym. But I think the quorum count has been lowered. Is that the case, David?
That is the case.
And and so I'm not sure whether I'm, I'm going to be there and be ready or or whether, you know, I should not be there, but I'll be ready to do whatever we need to do to to go forward on Thursday night.
Thank you, Paul. That being said, do we want to move on to the next agenda item?
So the next agenda item is discussion of new open lot storage regulations that that David Hajar has worked on for, for probably close to a year, I think. These regulations, we sent copies to the board in your packet so you get familiar with them. The packet included the the regulations and an application form and I think a violation form. I've reviewed them and Pat has reviewed them. I, I wanted to just make the board aware that there, that these regulations do have a role for for the planning office to to inventory these facilities and try to keep track of them. And it, the regulations go beyond just open lot storage facilities, the way we were just discussing as inventory lots. But but in some cases, they will include additional vehicles that might be on a lot, like an auto repair lot. And I think it also may cover the situation that the skating club of Boston is going to have, where they have a parking agreement with neighboring property owners to allow them to park cars there for certain events that might take place six or eight times a year. So I just want to make sure these are on your radar and you understood them. Since David is here, maybe we could invite him to to speak a little bit more about it and inform us about some of what went on as he was working on these.
Sure, you, you pretty much nailed it, Paul, and I appreciate your involvement with with Patrick and several others in town and trying to get a good set of regulations. So just to tack on to what Paul said about covering other situations, like if the skating club of Boston takes on parking to an, with the next door neighbor, they would be charged. Or also, say, repair shops that have approval to have, say, 15 cars on their property to, to, to sell. We targeted any facility or property that has 10 vehicles or more, which is subject to the regulations. So if it's really a small shop that has eight or 10 vehicles on it and no harm, no foul. If they have more than that, then they will be charged. So our effort over the next few weeks is we're going to try to get a meeting together to see how we collect that data to be sure we have the entire list, because the fire chief is the one or his representative is the one to inspect all these sites to ensure that they're in compliance with the regulation. And we'll need that time to inform all the owners of these properties that these regulations are in play, that they're going to have to file for a business license and come before the board or submit documents. So we look at this as sort of a balance to what's going on in town with these lots. It was not intended to to punish them. But clearly, as some of you have spoken, the town is not getting the tax revenue from these manufacturing properties that we would hope would would generate more business related construction in a workplace environment and not just throw a bunch of cars on the lot. The law doesn't treat automobiles as assets, so we can't tax them. But they're pretty valuable in total worth on on a lot if you have a few hundred cars. You know, it's in excess of a million dollars and the town gets very little. So we're just trying to balance the scale a little bit. We don't, we were punitive in the rates, the fees that we approved, which is basically $18 for permanent sort of open storage lots and $7 for what we'll call temporary parking, such as the skating club or such and places like that. So we hope that we'll have a meeting together and move forward with it, especially as we come into the new year when there will be requirements for people to submit applications. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
It sounded very good, Hajar. Thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't want to say to leave out what Paul's role is, Paul's role, it really is the the gatekeeper of trying to keep track of all these lots. And I think once we have a completed list, it'll be easier for him to, to deal with it, but we have to get there. But clearly, we see the planning board office as the the one place where people have to go to first. So they're going to be able to recognize these locations and understand them and be able to document them and keep it up to date for us.
Thank you. Paul?
Um, I don't have anything more on this. Thank you, David. That was helpful.
Next item.
We have some planning board associate member interviews lined up. And we have, those folks are on the call. And the first person is Miranda. I'm probably not going to say your right name right, Miranda. Who that? Hand it over to the board to conduct the interview.
Miranda, are you ready to be interviewed?
Uh, yes, I'm just figuring out how to turn my camera on. Hi, I'm ready.
Okay. Mr. Bamber, do you have any questions for Miranda? Mr. Sheen?
No, I think Rob's mic is off.
Yep. Sorry. Miranda, welcome. How long have you lived in Norwood?
Just since August. I just moved here recently.
And you've, you found some interest in the planning board in town?
Yeah, I studied public policy for my masters and I'm interested in finding ways to give back to the community and serve. I also currently work for the Public Building Service and through that work, I interpret government regulations and just try to give back to the community which I live in.
Thank you. Mr. Sheen?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Mr. Hatchey? Turn on your mic.
Hello, good evening. I'm curious, have you had the opportunity to see some or several of the recent meetings?
I went to one last month, but I haven't been to one since.
Oh, so I was just curious if you had any real thoughts about the some, some, some of the major issues that that have come up, but that we, we've been talking about them for quite some time. I have no further questions.
Mr. Petrykowski, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Miranda. Just in your, in your background, you said you you interpret government. It was a government contracts or or public policy. Zoning Board is governed by basically the zoning board rules and regulations. We have a jurisdiction. We can't go in and out of that jurisdiction. We can't do more than our charge. First of all, thank you for your interest, as all, all the people are. But just a little bit more of your background and you, you said that government agencies and things like that and a little more of what you do in that kind of work.
Yeah, of course. So currently, I work as a contract specialist. And what I do is I help with procuring and administering contracts for snow, snow removal, landscaping, janitorial services or mechanical contracts within public buildings in New England. So basically, we have our main regulation, which is the federal acquisition regulation. And I use that in order to help either write new contracts, new contracts that we're soliciting and also to help interpret contracts that we're administering. And yeah, that's, that's the most, most of the work that I do there.
You mentioned two things. There's snow removal. You having, are you having a hard time hiring snow driver, snow people to plow those buildings because they're, all the towns are?
Yeah, especially in towns up in Vermont and in Maine, it's hard to find people.
That will plow? Really, I would think there'd be more up there than than down here.
Yeah, there's just not as many people.
And landscaping is, we all, we've very close, we know a lot about landscaping on this board. More, you probably, probably most higher landscapers versus like landscape architects, that kind of thing, but and, you know, as you, as you said, the planning board is it's a good board. For all the people listening in, I'll, I'll, I'll say it a couple of times. Thank you for your interest in in public service with Norwood. It's a great town. My, I would always tell anybody, no matter what board they serve on, town meeting is a great way to really get your foot in the door in the town and be part of the town, because we're a town, we're, you know, town representative, former government. And it really is a great way to get yourself in on the ground floor of serving the town. But but that's all I have. Thank you very much, Miranda.
Thank you. Miranda, I'm Al Porro. I'm the chairman of the planning board, and I want to thank you for your interest as well. What agency did you say, is it a federal agency that you work for?
It's a federal agency. It's the General Services Administration is the agency. And then within that, I work for the Public Building Service.
Uh huh. So, so you're covering all of New England? Oh, it's a nice part-time job. Only kidding. I thank you for your interest. It's very interesting as you, you go, you know, procurement purposes. And of course, a lot of your, your work is also prevailing wage requirements as well. Is that part of the reason you run into problems with like snow plowing and landscaping? Those contractors, for the most part, aren't compliant with prevailing wage? Is that, is that what you find?
We don't find too many problems with that, because a lot of the, the snow contracts tend to be smaller, smaller businesses. But we do deal with the prevailing wages from the Department of Labor and you have to implement those.
And where do you live here in town?
I live on Florence Ave.
Very nice. Okay. I have no additional questions, but like my companions here on the board, I do want to thank you for your interest. And Mr. Halke Otis, who is the town planner, has a question. He'd like to speak to you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Miranda. How are you?
Good.
Your, your agency made the the national news today.
Yeah.
So I want to give a little bit of background information for you and Derek and George who are also on the call that are going to be interviewed next. So the planning board is is five elected members. And the associate board member position we just created a couple of years ago. The, the only circumstances in which the board would need the assistance of an associate member is in the case of a special permit application when one or more board member may not be able to participate for a number of different reasons, whether they're, they're ill or a conflict of interest or or out of town or something like that. In those situations, the chairman would, would look to the associate member and say, I want you to to sit on this particular case. So the planning board does special permits. They also do subdivisions and and some other types of permits, site plan approvals. They really get to the nuts and They really get to the nuts and bolts of how a site is developed, designed, and developed. So a lot of what the associate board member does is kind of sit on the bench and watch. And then maybe once or twice a year, there's a case like this where the chairman may need to call in their assistants to sit on a particular case. It really is considered a training position so that when one of our board members decides that they want to retire or not run for election, or, you know, if there's an opening, then we have an associate board member that's already familiar with the issues that the board has been dealing with recently. Already familiar with, you know, what the role of the planning board is. And they've been trained for a little while so that they can jump in and kind of hit the ground running. So we wanted to make sure that all of the candidates for the position understood that it's not a position where you're always participating and always voting on everything that comes in front of the board. It's just under those kind of limited circumstances. At the, at the discussion of the chairman, you may ask the associate member that might not be sitting on a case, but, you know, what do you think about this? And get their feedback and engage them in the process. That's some of the background on the position. And I just kind of like to take a moment and see, you know, if you have any comments on what we talked about tonight at the meeting. This issue of open lot storage of vehicles and whether we should continue to allow them, and if so, where we should allow them. Wanted to see what you think about that conversation tonight.
Yeah. I guess for your first question about how I feel about the position as more of a training job, I think that that's what I'm looking for. I really want to, wanted to find a role in local government that I could contribute, contribute my own perspective from working for, like, working with public buildings. But then also, I really want to learn, since I still am very young in my career. I just recently graduated a little bit over a year ago. And I think that that's really what drew me to the position. For the second question, I think from, from what we discussed today about the open lot storage, I think I definitely need to hear more about all the different perspectives before I can really make a decision on it. I think that some market research would be helpful looking into what other towns are doing. I'm curious what maybe the, there's some automobile dealerships right over the line on Westwood, in Westwood. I wonder what maybe those dealerships are doing? Are they bringing their cars and storing them in Norwood? I think there's a lot of different things to look at. But yeah, I guess those are my initial thoughts tonight.
Thank you. And in response to the last thing you mentioned, it's my understanding that the special permit that the Westwood Planning Board issued for that car dealership had a condition that no cars be stored in Westwood and that part of that property is in Norwood and the cars are stored in Norwood. That's what I understand how Westwood handles it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Miranda, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We hope to get back to one of your candidates within the next week to 10 days. Probably two weeks, rather, excuse me. By the next meeting. And on the 23rd, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you for having me.
Okay.
We have George Blagden next on the list.
George, are you out there?
Yep, just coming on camera now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Can you see me now? Cool.
That's okay. Okay, George, tell us about yourself, please.
Sure. So professionally, I come from a mechanical engineering background. I work for the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, testing full-scale structural wind turbine blades. We have a laboratory in Charlestown. I've been there for about 10 years now. I serve currently as the technical manager overseeing all the all the testing activities and all the future testing programs. In that time, I went back to school, got my MBA. And then in the side, I've got a couple entrepreneurial activities, and I'm always thinking of other, other ideas that could possibly flourish to spend, spend some of my energy on. I moved to Norwood a year ago now, and this is where we're settling. So in that time, I've been looking for something to get involved in with the town. And when I saw the associate position, I thought it was just perfect. I'm looking for somewhere where I can learn how the town government acts and still in a position off my opinions on where we're going to be in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. Because that's a concern of mine as we're starting a family.
Very good. I sat right at Charlestown every day.
It's not bad. We start early, starting at six, 6:30. It's the ride home that gets you. Anytime after, after two, you're done. But the pike, the pike's not too bad. The expressway is obviously.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Sheen, do you have some questions?
No, no questions.
Mr. Bamber?
Well, you answered the question I was going to ask, how long you lived in Norwood? No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Patrick Kowski?
This was the chairman. Welcome, George. Welcome to Norwood again.
Thank you.
All your town meeting, boy, get on town meeting, no matter what other boards you're on. That's a great way. And you're, you're in the energy field, all of that. Is it, is it just an interest in, in playing board is, it's a good board, but it's a, you know, it's a dry board, you know? It's zoning, it's but you do get a chance to kind of look down the, down the future and you kind of by setting the, we talked a lot tonight about zoning and articles. And you do get a chance to kind of change the, the direction of the town a little bit through articles. We're talking one, you know, tonight, we had talked about the open lot storage. You know, we've allowed this for years and years and years. We have the auto mile. You know, but we've come to a, you know, a place in our life in Norwood here that maybe we can't go much for, you know, longer than that. And so what brought your attention to something like that, zoning and?
Yeah, yeah. So you said it's a dry board. I can see how someone might think that, but I don't think that. When I drive around town and wherever I've lived, I always see either open lots or older, not unmaintained buildings or certain areas as development opportunities. And I certainly don't have the financial means or the time to be developer. And so I see the planning board in, in that route as where I can involve with developing the town and what it's going to look like in the future. You're talking about Vanderbilt tonight and it's in open lot storage. If, and I just look out in five, 10, 15 years where if they become parking lots for those dealers now, I don't think we'd ever get them back. And I think that's something to think about long term. Because I assume once they get them, they tend to keep hold of them. I don't know if that's historically true or not with the other lots in town, but I could see that being the case. So it'd be something I would be concerned with. And I think you guys have identified that area is prime for the possibility of its own community in Norwood. There's already some activity over there with the brewery and whatnot. If you put housing, if you put mixed-use buildings, it's probably going to grow itself. If you build it, they will come. So someone else has to build it, but we, you as a board, need to allow it, so.
Yeah, good point. Sometimes temporary is a permanent word. And
I'd be interested, and you guys obviously are more aware than I, if that is the case with open lot storage for cars historically for the dealers. If they've ever all of a sudden given it up or sold it to be developed by someone else. That'd be something I'd look at.
We actually had one, one of those situations this summer off of Everett Street. Amazon is leasing a big, like, 215 square foot existing warehouse. And next to the warehouse, there were two pretty much vacant, underdeveloped lots, one of which had a special permit for car storage on it. So that use went away. It, ironically, they were storing cars there, but now they're building a parking lot to park cars. So it's really not much different, but it is in connection with the Amazon distribution set. That's the only one that I'm aware of that, that went away after it was of permitted use. And, you know, theoretically, at some point in time in the future, it's going to be so valuable, valuable that if, that's probably not the best revenue generator for a property. But yeah, I understand what you're saying and I share your concerns.
Thank you. George, where do you live here in town?
37 Sunnyside Road. Do you guys, I know his town was, or might still be at his new house, but Bob Randall? He's a town meeting member. I don't know if you've ever crossed paths, but his house.
Okay.
Oh, the Randall House. Oh, that's haunted, isn't it?
That's more so.
George, you said in your line of work, you're testing electronics or solar? What, what was that?
Full-scale structural testing. So we're bending wind turbine blades, sometimes to the point of failure. Full scale. So we're talking, right now, we're testing a 107-meter blade. So it's longer than Gillette.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's something. It's something. It's a cool job. Cool job. So I like to learn. I like to be involved with the town and reading documents is something not, not unfamiliar with, so.
George, I'm going to come, you're going to have to help me out with that again. What are these blades for?
Wind turbines.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep. So all the new offshore, offshore programs and projects that are being developed off the coast, we're testing the blades for.
You sure they're going to happen?
Go to Northern Maine, you'll see them all over the place.
Yeah, they're all up there. I'm pretty sure the ones offshore will happen. I don't think we'll have a repeat of the Cape Wind project.
What about working with the town light department regarding wind? Have you approached them?
I have not. I have not. I mean, that would be a completely, a completely different realm than what I'm in. That'd be more like a purchase contract or a PPA than, than something more I'd be in line with. But I'd be happy to facilitate it. Massachusetts Clean Energy Center certainly wants to get more municipalities involved with their programs and bring them on to, but there's, there's challenges there.
Well, good. Does anybody else have any questions for George?
Mr. Chairman, I just asked, similar to before, welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
It's worth noting, Paul mentioned the role of the associate member. I was an associate member not all that long ago, so it's, that's the story. Have you had an opportunity to see some of the stuff that the board's discussed over the last few months, like the corridor study and Route 1 redevelopment and all those sorts of things?
Yeah, yeah, I have. I've been following the Route 1 redistricting or rezoning, I guess you could call it, or redistricting, pretty closely. And I think correctly identified a lot of areas that will benefit from mixed-use buildings, residential buildings, increase our housing stock in Norwood and kind of revitalize the the look of the area, I think is one of the keys with the landscaping. Landscaping points that you guys have selected to put in there as well as setbacks and not affecting, not affecting the neighbors. I put in my little cover letter email that I see the planning board and being involved with the town as, as kind of bridging the gap between developing and increasing that tax base and also not affecting negatively the surrounding residents and us as residents. So I've, I've recognized that you all have been very conscious of that, developing the BPH district.
Patrick?
No, I was just going to say, you said something earlier that kind of resonated with me. Driving around, seeing sites and being like, oh, it happened there, we could go on there. I think they all kind of do that, you know, just naturally wherever we are. And that's just kind of why I was just going to say, I mean, beyond following regulation, looking at our zoning bylaws, following state regulation, we also want to be proactive. And so I think, say, you know, for either you, Derek, or Miranda, that associate board member, you know, whether or not you don't, you vote on only special permits on a as-need basis, that person still should want to be involved and go to meetings, learn, ask questions. I know Brian did that when he was the associate and our other former associate would ask questions as well. So it definitely is a good opportunity to, to both learn, obviously, the regulation itself, but also think proactively and think about the future, just with the other board members. So
I agree.
One comment and a question. Yeah.
Yeah, no, I completely agree, completely.
Do you have any questions for the board?
Um, I don't think so. I was going to ask if it was more of a supportive position, if it could be a supportive position and how I as an associate could help support you members. But it seems like that's really not the, the role of the position. So if there's any way I can support you, be happy to.
And I think that was kind of brought up in the course of the discussion that in more than one occasion, we've asked the associate, and Mr. Hatchey will tell you that, asked for an opinion from him, he's listening in on us at a public hearing and whatever, and just to take some additional input. And that's where the value comes about. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where everything is virtual right now. When we're back to a quote, new normal, there'll be a, a meeting in a room and the public will be there, will be there, and the presenters and all their representatives will be there. And it's a whole different environment, but it's a, it's a greater, it's a better feeling, in my opinion, to be there in person. And you're looking that person in the eye who's coming in looking for something. And that, that you'll find is rewarding.
Nice. Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, even though, like you, like the chairman said, you may not be able to work on something, but your input is always welcome. Everyone, you know, the more the merrier as far as input.
Great. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you very much, George. Again, I want to say thank you on behalf of the board for your interest. And we will be back to you within a couple of weeks. Okay?
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Derek, are you, I'm sorry, Patrick?
No, that's the same, bye.
Derek, are you out there, sir?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Good evening. Welcome. Derek Mason, visit the board here. Do you have to start off with some questions from the board? Rob Bamber, got any questions for Derek?
Sure, I'll, I'll shoot my softball out there. How long have you lived in Norwood?
Sure. We moved here three years ago, live on Walters Road. If anybody knows where that is. It tees off of Rosemary. It's near the high school. I came from Washington DC, but lived elsewhere. I am an architect, actually in the process of getting my exams together, so I'm not licensed yet. While I was in DC, I was involved with a community improvement project through a nonprofit. While I was in DC, I was involved with the community improvement project through a nonprofit. So this also got me interested in the 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 position available to over answer your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes, you've you've, welcome. Uh, you've heard the other two candidates. Uh, what makes you the better candidate in this position?
Uh, I have experience in architecture and also, um, doing some master planning. While I was in school, I had an opportunity to work in London at a a large firm and did master planning of a portion of the city of London. As well as my education and understanding, uh, the process of zoning and the setbacks and the involvements. However, here in Miranda, she has a lot of experience dealing with the government, and that is what zoning is. So congratulations on that. Yeah, they're they're from my experience and knowledge with the built environment.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pachakowski?
I'm I'm curious. You said you did some master planning in London?
Yes. Are you familiar with the city?
Area like a streets, like streetscapes and and, uh, like an area, I'm curious on.
Sure.
The I'm assuming they have zoning and all of that and over there.
And it's 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 different. And this was a number of years ago. So the the client owned, um, several blocks near Covent Garden. And they wanted to, um, really improve the area and create a cut through a passage way through. To revitalize the whole area. So we came up with several schemes to the, um, develop their ideas and for their approval. But it also went in through zoning. I was only there for six months, so. Uh, I actually recently went on Google and actually saw a portion of what I did actually was built, so it did happen. But yeah, so the we didn't really necessarily just the streets, the streetscapes. And my involvement really had to do with, um, mapping the area, what's there? And also developing the the buildings and coming up with schemes.
That's interesting, though, how other, you know, you other, even other towns, what other countries do, you know, handle that that kind of thing. Again, like I told everyone else, zoning is, uh, you know, we're 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 regulated by the book, but we can change the book. Uh, which is kind of. A good thing, you know, we're we're looking to, you know, change three or four, even if it's, you know, something worked for, you know, a hundred years. But now it's it's, you know, new use has come up, you know, who thought, you know, even five years ago that we'd have marijuana dispensaries, you know? So that's the new use now. So we gotta come up and we have to, you know, react to it and and, you know, where are you gonna put it? And I mean, these it's 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 always changing, so we're always looking at the, you know, we get to change the book. We have to live by it, but we get to change it. Well, we get to town meeting actually changes it, but we get to. You know, do the the dirty work to to get it to town meeting. Town meeting actually approves it, but, uh, it's it's fun.
Right. It goes goes through you. Yeah. And I and I fully understand that.
Mr. Hatchey?
Um, welcome. Uh, thanks for your interest. And it's funny, I could probably open a window in my house and shout out to you. I live very, very close to you. But, um, uh, so reading your resume, uh, architecture, it's pretty pretty impressive. We've, Paul can speak to this far more than I can at this point, but the there's been some not not discussion of whether or not we should implement that like a design committee. But there's been, it's been mentioned that they exist in other towns. Does your does your expertise sort of lend itself to that? Like if there's going to be a mixed use development somewhere in town, do you possess any specific, uh, professional? I mean, clearly more than the average person, but do you do you feel like you've got some some expertise that would bring something extra to the table and that sort of analysis?
Yes, um, and and I I enjoy the the mixed use development. And and we'll look at it holistically. Um, and try to have a good balance of of what the neighborhood needs are as well as the cities, the tax base. And how is it going to be, uh, integrated?
Right.
Mr. Alkeotis, you have anything you'd like to ask?
No questions, um, but, uh, the planning board meets twice a month, usually on Monday evenings. There's occasionally, um, a subcommittee or another committee's meeting that one of us has to go to. Um, and there are town meetings a couple of times a year. So that's pretty much the time commitment. Our our meetings usually go from, you know, seven and a half and a couple of hours. Um, and, uh, um, it's not a huge time commitment, but but it is, you know, scheduled and and, um, it's important to be able to make it to all of those meetings.
Sure.
It sounds like, um, you know, your architectural background, um, would would be a big help to the planning board. You know, at times we've got buildings that are proposed and the architecture is kind of plain Jane and doesn't really, you know, do much for us. And, um, I am not a designer. I I've learned as I've I've gone along. But, um, the planning board could definitely, you know, use some help, um, with making suggestions. To designers, the things that could be added in to make a building more interesting or or more compatible with the area where it's being proposed.
Right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Derek, what do you, what do you think about, seeing that you've been here for three years? What do you think about a design review committee for the town of Norwood?
I agree. And I also think that there should be a BID, Business Improvement Districts. That the businesses get involved in and incorporate themselves for the whole development of that that area. There's various different segments of of Norwood, as you guys talked about, of Route One and all the the current dealerships. I'm originally from Cleveland, Ohio, and going going through there reminds me of home. Now, there's a lot of that. So that's that's one area. There's other areas. And so these these areas, um, really should have a good, um, planning and jump back to a master plan. I briefly had worked at Bargman Henry. They do senior centers. And I remember, um, briefly working on the senior center for Norton. Um, I don't know where it is now, um, what stage it is. But I remember asking the the town manager, do you guys have a a master plan with your city? Because there's a lot more going on than just a a senior center that they're talking about. I was like, no, like you should consider that. What's your directions? Is there a master plan for Norwood and the various different, um, segments?
No, there's there's been strategic plans done for different areas of town. Over the years, there was a plan done for South Norwood. There was a downtown master plan. Um, but there hasn't been a a full master plan that looked at, you know, the eight big subject topics that that are usually covered in a master plan. Because the town's, um, pretty well built out, I think, over the years, they decided that that, you know, they didn't need one.
Sure.
Super. Anybody else? Any questions? Well, Derek, I just want to thank you on behalf of the board for your time this evening. And please feel free to keep checking in on us. We'll be in touch with you by the next planning board meeting, okay? And, uh, like I say, I do appreciate the interest and as not to echo Mr. Pachakowski. But town meeting is is a great avenue to work for your town. And, uh, you have, you know, the town government form of open meeting is the way to go. You can, your voice is heard. So thank you again, and you have a very nice evening.
Great. Thank you.
Another good night from Patrick. I saw that.
It's, you know, it's waving, just being nice.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay. What do we got next?
Uh, I just wanted to throw up on the screen. So I think it's planning board business. Um, but also a kind of review of meetings for the rest of the year as well as early, uh, twenty twenty one. Um, I think I put the wrong date.
So January through March, we're gonna put twenty twenty one?
Yeah.
Rather than twenty twenty again?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty was a bad year.
It was a bad year. We don't want to repeat it.
Like Groundhog Day, we're just gonna repeat. So these are, I mean, these are the dates I threw up there. Obviously, we talked about the twenty third. Um, originally, the sixteenth, um, had been a meeting we discussed in the summer. I just changed it due to the fact that we'd be meeting two weeks in a row. And so after that, everything that you see in front of you is a, uh, is following our regular every other week, um, pattern.
Patrick?
Yep.
How how much activity have you got coming in? And the reason why I ask selfishly is in January, I'm hoping to get away for about three or four weeks. And if we get into one meeting rather than two meetings, is that possible from the backlog you've looked at?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, so the one thing I have is we're probably gonna have a, um, public hearing for the Carnegie Row lot on December seventh. That's that's the timeframe that we they've applied and we got that, uh, application. Beyond that, I don't know what Paul thinks either, but I'm not sure what the plan is. For the dissolved special, um, I mean, obviously, we have to get, we have to get through it through town meeting first. Um, we've heard January, we've heard February, we've heard sometime in between or after. But, you know, we could probably still dissolve it. I mean, we could still change it to one January meeting. Uh, but I'm just saying it's a little bit of a gray area right now when we would get back to that special.
Okay. Thank you.
But there's, in terms of projects, there is, there's only the Carnegie Row.
And that's, you're looking at December for that?
Yeah, December.
Pro haba day.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Sheen?
Uh, no, nothing.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Just going back to my earlier question and for my own benefit. Where David Ajar had said they're gonna dissolve and then, uh, call for new ones. I guess my question, Paul, is will they call for the warrant? Will they call for a new warrant? Anything, say, for example, we've we have already voted on, uh, all right, so we voted on the landscape amendment, right? And we we've, we held a public hearing, we closed the public hearing, we voted on it. We were gonna bring it to town meeting. Say we wanted to tweak that. Can we, do we have to re have another public hearing? Do we have to, is it closed? It's too late? Uh, I guess, you know, do you know, I don't, am I making myself clear?
Yeah, and and I'm I'm looking over my shoulder to grab my my State Zoning Act to to, um, remember what the dates are. But, um, in in section five of chapter forty eight lays out the process for adopting a zoning amendment. And, um, I think that there's a requirement that the public hearing for an article be held within, um. Do you remember, Pat, it's it's like within six months of when, um, the town meeting is. And so we already checked and and we can do a town meeting in January and February and not have to repeat. Our public hearings if we're not making any changes. So in the event that we want to continue to to, um, tweak the bylaw amendments or make any changes. Um, depending on what it is, we might need to have another public hearing. But if it's something minor in nature, we may not need to do that. Um, you know, as I said earlier, we're in uncharted territory and, you know, we may need to consult with council, um, on some of these these questions. But for right now, um, you know, moving the town meeting to January, February doesn't really impact us that much, um, on the course that we're on now.
That was my question. So if we were to make a a a significant change or we would have to re re, uh, notify and have another public hearing?
Yeah, it for one thing, it's it's only fair and two, it's it's, you know, the the, uh. Public hearings are designed to, um, you know, get public input. If we're making some big change to zoning, we have to, um, open the doors back up to that input.
Mr. Sheen, did you have a question, sir?
No questions.
Okay. But Paul, getting back to, as Ernie talked about, you know, something like the medical overlay district. One of the things in that that nine point nine point three. You, uh, number four was the group homes as part of it on that. Is that, is that something that was in the, uh, stuff that, um. That the consultant was doing for us? Or is that something that we, I don't remember working on the group home part of it?
Yeah, that was, you know, Ted worked on that bylaw amendment for us. Um, and if there's something that you've seen in any of the bylaw amendments that that you want to address. Um, fortunately, we now have the opportunity, you know, there's more time added to the shot clock. And and, um, we can continue to 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 massage these and tweak these articles so that we're more comfortable with them. So in in one respect, it's it's not all bad. It's good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Patrick.
All right.
We're good?
We're all good. Yep.
If we're all good and no one has anything else, I'd be interested in, uh, having a motion made to, uh, close this evening's meeting.
Um, Mr. Chairman, did we have to change any of those dates, uh, in January? For the schedule before we go forward with that? I noticed that you wanted to change a date in January.
Yeah, yes, I I thought we were gonna discuss it a little further. I was just drawing that out there.
Okay. All right.
Uh, Patrick was gonna be looking into what stuff we have other than the, um, the December seventh issue. If that's the case, we can, Joe, we can do it now. If there's no other questions, or would you rather wait another meeting?
It it doesn't matter to me. I just didn't, I didn't want to gloss over it. I didn't know. If we had forgotten about it, but if we can do it next time, that's fine, too.
Mr. Alkeotis, what would you prefer?
So maybe by, um, by our next meeting, we'll have a better indication from the selectmen of when they're gonna schedule that meeting, whether it's January or February. So either way, that schedule that we just looked at is probably gonna need to be changed based on whatever happens with the rescheduling of town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We just scored, Ernie.
Um, Bob, the, uh, Newton ran it in from five yards out.
Hey, good. He can't throw, but he'll run it like in ten times a year, so.
Just, uh, one one thing I just let all the board members know and and, uh, Paul and Patrick is, you know, we. Going back to the, uh, open lot storage, um, just think about, you know, what we want to do. We are gonna take a vote on it in a couple of weeks, so, you know, is it something, look at it, think about it? You know, what the what the, you know, the consequences would be, uh, to the dealerships if we do that? Or what what the consequences to the, you know, the town would it look like if we don't do it? And, uh, so, you know, it's 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 kind of a big step. You know, outlawing that where we do have so many dealerships, you know, in town and, uh. You know. We want to obviously try to accommodate them, but at what point? At at what cost? So something maybe we just think about or, uh, get some feedback on that or think about it. That's all.
Paul, that report that, uh, the person in the manager's office did for him regarding the, is that available?
Yep, we can, um, we can send that out to you if you want it.
Ernie, I think that's something you'd probably want to take a look at, too. Yes, please. Send it to the board.
We'll send that out and and Ernie, we will, um, for for the the situations that are already kind of on our radar. There's a couple of special permit applications I mentioned. Um, there's David Spiegel's, um, application that came in to permit a, uh, repermit Carnegie Row. We'll have some answers for the board on just specifically what if, you know, scenarios. So that you you'll understand what what could possibly happen if the board decides to prohibit the use.
Yeah, I I know it's not in front of us, but jeez, when you say, you know, I I. Yeah, I, I know it's not in front of us, but jeez, when you say, you know, going in front of the ZBA, you know, six hundred cars, wow. You know, the, you know.
Build a fifty thousand square foot, well, a showroom to go with it, then. Okay. Anything else? Then I will entertain that motion. Close this evening's meeting. So moved? In a second? Again, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous. Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Patcakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye. Five-zero on the closing. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening and enjoy the game.
Have a good night.